Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Forgot my microphone. I wanted to welcome you all to the special board meeting, which is called a study session. And so it's more informal, so you're going to hear interaction, different facets. So the way this is going to work tonight is I'll introduce our superintendent, Dr. Remendini, and she will introduce her administrative staff and directors and give you a lowdown about what's going to happen. This study session is just for the purpose of the Wickenburg High School restrooms. That's the only topic we're going to hear tonight because there's not going to be any action taken. We're going to discuss. So once the presentation is completed, the board is going to ask questions, if they have any, of the presenters. And then when the board is all finished with questions, then we'll open it up to the floor. And I've got two sheets so far, but doesn't mean you can't speak. Doesn't look like there's a whole bunch waiting. So anyway, that's how it's going to work. So the board is going to go and then we're going to open it up to the floor. Okay? So with that being said, I'm going to introduce Dr. Remendini, our superintendent, and she will get the presentation going.
I have a dead microphone.
Oh, you do?
Thank you, Mr. Malio and members of the board. Thank you to the community members in attendance this evening. The purpose of this study session, as Mr. Malio indicated, is to address concerns about the requirements for a public school in Arizona to allow a transgender student to use the restroom of the gender to which they identify. Over the past several weeks, staff and administrators at both the Wickenburg High School and the district level have continued to research this issue to seek possible solutions to address both the safety and privacy of all of our students. Our school and district leaders are prepared this evening to share some of these possible solutions, provide an update regarding changes that have already been made, and to clarify information about some of the recent events at the high school. Before I turn this over to our presenters, I want to thank our parents for their input, suggestions, and specifically attendance tonight. I encourage every parent to take advantage of the many opportunities to become involved in our schools. Whether it's the PTA, site council, booster clubs, or the parent superintendent council, your voice is important to us and necessary to ensure that our district remains the best in the state. This evening's presenters will be, first, Mr. Mark Gorman, leaders of the Wickenburg High School. Mr. Bushbaum, Assistant Principal, and Mr. Johnson, Athletic Director, will support that information. Mr. Jim Missel, our Director of Maintenance and Operations, will present, as will Mr. Jeremy Corliss, our Director of Technology. And Ms. Erin Johnson, our Executive Director of Business Services, will do some of the wrap-up and final. So right now, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Gorman.
Thank you, Dr. Remendini. See if I got this working right now. Of course it was. Malio, members of the governing board, community members, parents, I am going to start things off this evening really talking kind of about where things started and where, you know, how it got to be where it is at this particular moment. So although I have a slide up here, there's not a lot that necessarily is going to be shown, but I'm going to go ahead and get things started while Jeremy is working on that particular element. So going back to how this kind of started, back in August, I was informed by a parent that we had a student that had identified as male using that restroom that they had identified by. That parent had a name for me, and I was not familiar with the student. It was a student that was new to us. I then talked to counselor who was familiar with this student, and the counselor, myself, and another administrator had brought the student down to the office to find out if this indeed was something that was going on. Brought them into the office and asked a question and found out quickly that, yes, that student was, who was identifying as male, was using the male restroom. Again, this student was new to us, had come from another school in the valley that had allowed that student, who had identified as female, to again, use that restroom, or identified as male, I'm sorry, to use the male restroom. They had continued when they had enrolled with us. So I spoke with the student for a short time, talked to them about using our single-use bathrooms in the office, and at that point, the student started utilizing those single-use restrooms. In the meantime, I had informed Dr. Remendini kind of of what had gone on and the situation. We had started doing a little bit of research, seeing what some of the court cases were that were out there that were recent. We kind of talked about that a little bit with one another, and then she also had reached out to the lawyers from the trust and received some feedback from them regarding these rulings from the court. And it was recommended that we allow transgender students to utilize the restroom that they identify by. So if a female identifies as male, use the male restroom, or if a male identifies as female, use the female restroom. So we did a little bit more investigating, had some more conversations about that, tried to figure out what the best way was to sort of navigate things. I again called the student down and talked to them to find out if this was indeed what they were, you know, wanting to do. And in the meantime, we had gotten an email from Anti-Defamation League regarding this issue, and that a complaint had been filed with them regarding our trans, or lack of, if you will, transgender friendliness when it came to restrooms. And so we had that conversation and decided that we needed to move in that direction based on the complaint, the rulings, and the feedback from the lawyer. So we spoke to the student and again confirmed that they wanted to use that restroom. I spoke to the parent to find out if they were on the same page with that, and we spoke about some of the concerns we had, but they had been down this road before and did want that to be the case. So tried to, again, allow that student to go back to utilizing that bathroom that they identified by. That lasted about half a day, maybe, and we started getting some, I think it was TikTok, if I remember correctly. I don't have TikTok, but some TikTok messages, snapshots of those TikTok messages started coming to us regarding comments that were out there in the Wickenburg High School community, at least regarding what was perceived as a transgender, open restroom, for, you know, use whatever restroom you wanted to use. And so Dr. Remendini, I believe it was also Valerie and myself, but the three of us, I think, had had some conversations around what the best route was to go with respect to communication. And at this point, we wanted to make sure that we had squashed the rumors around campus that anyone could use any bathroom. We also talked about needing to communicate that out with parents. The first round we wanted to do was to get the message to students through the system that would identify, or that would inform them, I should say, that it wasn't that, that there was a process that they shouldn't be just using any bathroom. We wanted to squash that piece that was going around out there. And then the next day, we were going to email something similar to parents. That, though, went out blackboard, and what we didn't realize at the time, unfortunately, was that it went everywhere. It went to parents as well as to students. So parents were getting that at the same time, and it was really not addressed to parents. It was really addressed more to students. So our mistake on that part. Obviously, that set the ball rolling with many of the concerns that have come up from that. The following day, I believe it was, was when students that were in opposition to the transgender bathroom use walked out of classes at lunch. We decided it was best to give them opportunity to voice and to give, to express the concerns with respect to that. So we allowed that to happen. Then some others that were in opposition to the opposition also had walked out. We gave them that afternoon. Again, there were some, I mentioned it before, some things that were said between the two groups that we're not proud of, I think were totally inappropriate, and did not represent a no-place-for-hate school. Let's just say that. So anyway, the following day, there was a small group that again assembled out in the parking lot, and we gave them some opportunity there. But then we went and spoke with them about, you know, about sitting out or protesting things on campus, indicating that we could not allow them to continue to do that. And most of them disseminated and went back to class. Some continued, I believe, that day. But that kind of was the end as far as the protesting that had gone on with respect to it. We did hold a parent meeting on the Wednesday, I believe it was a Wednesday, right after this had all happened, and did speak to parents, tried to kind of address why it is that we were doing what we had to do, and just kind of get some of the concerns aired out. I, in the process, have also talked to some parents about those same concerns, one-on-one or with small groups, to get their thoughts, their feelings, really understand where they're coming from, and hopefully share too where we were coming from as a school and as a district. The, in the meantime, we have been doing quite a bit of work, which I'm going to allow for some of our others to come talk about throughout the evening. I'll be back to talk also along the way, in fact, just in a few minutes. But those are sort of the events that occurred that led us to where we are. We have had quite a few meetings. We've had several walkarounds on our campus. We have done a lot of looking at our facility and researching options out there, and that hopefully is what we are going to hear tonight, is to how we can go about creating a bathroom situation that works for all. So with that, I'm going to invite my admin team up here, Mr. Bushbaum, Mr. Johnson, to talk a little bit about some of the things that, some of the things going on.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Gorman. We're here to basically to talk about, just to give some clarification on the conduct of our students along with these issues. The first one was vandalism. Unfortunately, these events also coincided with a national TikTok challenge that challenges students to take small videos of them defacing or stealing from high schools, whether it be school bathrooms, not just high schools, middle schools as well, bathrooms, classrooms, whatnot. So we've had a lot of damage to our bathrooms, mostly soap dispensers, where students would knock them off the walls, or knock the toilet paper dispensers off the walls, those things. We did have a mirror get torn off, and we also had some different handwritings and artwork and different inappropriate images written on our walls as well. This is not necessarily in conjunction with what was going on, but it was kind of at the same time that those things were also happening. So we've had to close bathrooms, re-clean bathrooms, replace soap dispensers multiple times. So that's been a major issue for all of our bathrooms on our campus. Regarding, there was a lot of talk about protests versus riots. And as Mr. Gorman said, we did have multiple student protests, but at no point did we have a riot. The day that the letter went out, the day after that, we did have students come during all three of our lunches to, the first two lunches was a silent protest, and then the third lunch, we had students from both sides, and that's where we had some students that were out of line, and things that were said. There was a lot of verbal names being called, those things, which was not appropriate, but at no point were students actually rioting. Then that night, we had some students continue to do kind of a protest and on both sides. And the day after, as Mr. Gorman did say, we had students that originally came to the parking lot and did a silent protest there, and just kind of spent some time as a group, and then they moved off campus near our driveway and spent that day and the following day roughly 10 to 12 kids that stayed there in opposition of the new bathroom policy. And so, but we wanted to make sure that, you know, we could clarify, because when the word protest comes, gets changed to a riot, obviously, that brings up with a whole bunch of concerns and worries. So we wanted to clarify what our students were doing was an act of protest as opposed to a riot. Okay?
So I'm going to talk a little bit about the misbehavior in the restrooms. When that day happened, on that September 14th, when we had that protest, there were some kids that were a little kind of free with their movement around campus, and we did have some pictures of boys entering girls' bathrooms, girls entering boys' bathrooms that day. We quickly, the next day, we had district administration on campus, and we had put a person, well, let me back up. With the vandalism as well as this, we closed our bathrooms down to around one hallway, and we kind of kept that one hallway open, but we put a person standing outside the bathrooms from the start of school till the end of school, just watching who was moving. We also had district administration, and so we had two to three people in those hallways at all times. And they were kind of the safe keepers, and that ended it right there. We didn't have anything moving forward after that, that one approved kind of peaceful protest day. It all stopped after there because we had a person stationed outside watching kids going in and out, kind of, you know, keeping an eye on how long they were in there, how many were in there, and allowing for not it to crowd and not kids to stay in there too long. And so since that day to today, we still have a person stationed in that hallway, watching those bathrooms at all times. And so we feel, you know, after that happened, we reacted well, and we kind of squashed that right away, and we didn't have any more issues after that September 14th day. We did have a threat by a student the night, I think it was the September 14th evening. I got a, my daughter actually walked into my bedroom and said, hey, I got a, one of my friends needs to show you something. Can she email you? And so she emailed me this screenshot, and it was what we described as a legitimate threat towards the school. So immediately, I called, you know, I got ahold of these two, and then we, I got ahold of the Wickenburg Police Department, Joe Leahy, our SRO, and I sent everything over to him. And if you know Joe, he's on this stuff right away. And so he started that evening, and they started an investigation. They made multiple visits to the home, found out that the kid wasn't there, made a plan so that when the kid returned, they were at his doorstep. Investigation happened, no weapons, no anything, they kind of did a threat assessment in the house, and nothing was found. We treated it as a legitimate threat, just for, to keep the kid safe and for the safety of our students. But the, not only did the Wickenburg Police Department, but also the police department where the kid lives joined together, and they did a great job taking care of this and stopping it immediately. To go backwards, all three of us kind of got together and said, we need to make sure that this kid does not step foot on campus. So when we had, when we thought there was a chance that the student would be on campus, we had Mr. Bushbaum, our SRO, Mr. Leahy, Donnie Shirkey's our security campus, and we had two WPD officers standing there at the bus stop, just in case the kid got off the bus to apprehend him, which he has not, or that student has not been on campus since before the threat. So I feel like we handled it really well. I feel like the Wickenburg Police Department handled it really well. We did our part by gathering statements, doing due process within the school walls, but the Wickenburg Police Department really took care of this and did it well, so.
I have a question, if that's okay. I had been told by a couple of parents that there were altercations in the bathroom related to the transgender student. Has that happened?
To my knowledge, there were no altercations, there were no altercations in the bathroom whatsoever.
Okay. I just wanted to ask. Thank you.
I ask one question there, Masser. The threat, how was that threat made?
It was made through a.
Social media, again.
It was, of course, social media.
Okay. Thank you.
We looked at it, we deemed it as a legitimate threat that we should take seriously, and we basically put the police department into action, and they took care of it.
Okay.
And essentially, what it caused was a disruption to the educational process.
Right. Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Thank you. So in response, we have done some things, made some changes across campus, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that next. One, they already mentioned, we did reduce the number of restrooms. It started initially before any of this happened as a result of this TikTok challenge. We started seeing some of our bathrooms vandalized in our commons, in our hallways, as well as at the football field at a Friday night game the week prior to some of this actually starting at our school. At the time, I'll be honest, I had no idea what it even was. I didn't, I just thought people are going in the bathrooms and destroying them. I later found out that it was a TikTok challenge and one of several that were out there. So at that point, because they were being vandalized, we started closing certain bathrooms off. So we might close the commons female bathroom because it's vandalized, damaged, and there was a lot of graffiti. We started looking at some others that that was happening in as well. And then when this happened, to try to, again, narrow that focus and be able to keep an eye on what was going on, we went this route. And this route was something that I had investigated through another school that was doing something similar. They were a school of about 1,500 to 2,000 students, much bigger in the valley. They have one bathroom they use on their campus. And it was, and I'm familiar with the campus, and I, and it's, you know, it's much bigger, let's just say that. They then are using the one, so we thought, let's try that. Let's try narrowing it down to that one bathroom. By putting somebody out, we also then put somebody that was at that bathroom that could then again monitor, as Mr. Bushbaum and Mr. Johnson said, of the kind of happenings around there. One, ears that could hear if something's being knocked off of walls, like our paper towel dispensers, but also eyes that could see who was going in, using what bathrooms, if there was anything that would be concerning based on all that had happened. They could have, you know, that be that person that's there to help intervene or to at least see what's going on. We do have cameras that are also right outside our bathrooms. Those, they're called, I think they're fisheye cameras, which means that they sort of look down and out in different directions, and so they sit outside, kind of just slightly down the hall, but they look at who, or they can monitor who does and goes, does and does not go in and out of the bathroom. And they have been helpful for us on a couple of occasions since this point. So we do have those that we're also monitoring, they're constantly recording, so if there's anything that ever gets into question, we're able to go back and verify one way or another if that truly did happen. And we, like I said, we have had to use them since that point, early on after this started. We also increased some of the single-use restrooms. So if you're, just to kind of define what single use is, it's just that single stall door that goes into a bathroom that locks, essentially. We have those, again, at the office that were initially used, but we also have opened them in our G building and our H building. So there's now one single-use bathroom that is being used in G hall that is for somebody that may be uncomfortable going into the bathroom there. And we also have the one in H. And what we did to acquire those was, we had two that were staff restrooms, a male and a female staff restroom, that were right adjacent to the restrooms in both of those halls. So we opened them up to, again, single use for students on one side, and staff then became the other side. We also have some other bathrooms that have been made single use. We have a construction engineering building that has its own bathrooms. If you've been, if you're familiar with campus, you've been there, it's the building up on the hill. And in there, there's actually two stalls in each one of those, but we're making those single use, so there's only one in, one out at any given time using that bathroom. Down in the media center, the same holds true. There's two restrooms, a male and a female. We've locked those. To access them, students have to check out keys from the person that's monitoring our 21st Century program, which is where those primarily are getting used from. Again, that's just part of, I guess, the process to making things safe. The other part, though, is really monitoring what's going on in terms of students coming and going from classrooms. So we're looking at minimizing how many are out at one time, so that there's not large groups that are gathering, monitoring who they are, so signing them out, so a student that leaves is signed out from a classroom. And if we need to, again, go back and check on who somebody was that was outside of a room at any given time, we can at least have a starting point for that. And with that, I'm going to turn it over then to, unless there's questions, I guess. I'll turn it over to Mr. Missel, who's going to talk a little bit about some of the privacy and some of the things that he's been working on in terms of doors within them. If you look here while he's coming up, I'm going to go ahead and talk some more about this. These are, look in our hallways, again, this is our G building, so here is our restroom, and then we have access to a single use next to it, adjacent to it. In our H, it's similar, again, this one here, so where he's standing, there is a single use restroom as well.
Mark, I do have one question. Going back to near the beginning here, when we talked about the TikTok post that occurred that seemed to have gotten the ball rolling on all this, did you say what that post had said?
Oh, I'm trying to remember.
I know there was something about Wickenburg High School, open bathroom.
Yeah. It says, it said, "Wickenburg High School now has an open bathroom policy. Students can use any bathroom they wish to use at any time," or something like that. It was like, come one, come all, which was never the case.
Right. I just wanted that out. Thank you.
Jim?
I can just talk about it? Good evening. We've done a lot of work starting on these bathrooms. We got the single-use bathrooms, which we've gotten in G and H building. We've got those taken care of, and those are able to be used. And we got the signs up on one of the doors, and then we're going to move the signs for the other staff door over there. We're going to get that one changed probably this next week. The G, the vocational building up there, there are two single bathrooms. We're changing that lockout so they can go in and lock it from the inside. But let's say something happens, we'll have a key, a master key, that we can get into those bathrooms if something happens in the bathrooms. Okay? So we've done that. Then the big, the next thing we've been doing is taking measurements of the stalls, measuring the stalls to see how big they are, how we're going to address those issues, and privacy for there. So like myself, I can look over, we got kids as big as me or bigger, and they can look over the stalls and look into it. And that's a privacy issue, and that needs to be addressed. So we're going to, we're looking at the doors, and we're looking at, I talked to a few companies, and we're looking at moving that up. So it's going to be a foot from the bottom, two to three feet at the top, depending on what you do, and the door will be about seven feet up, six and a half to seven feet up after we get it all measured out. So the door will be taller. Right here, these gaps, you can see in there, and your sons or your daughters have probably told you that. My kids are grown, and they didn't go to school here, but other schools, they said, yeah, Dad, they always looked in there if somebody went to school in the bathroom. So, and that's where we're going to put a piano hinge on it. There's a hinge that you use that when we add the new door, it will, you will not be able to see in those doors. Okay? So we'll take care of that. The other thing that we have that's coming up, you got the showers, oh, this is a privacy trim that you can purchase, and the company that I talked to about that, several schools have bought that, and they have used them, and because of this issue right here. So that's a possibility. But when we buy our new doors, when we get them, it automatically comes with a privacy hookup to it, and it's not going to be the rubber one, it will be a steel hinge to it. And then, right. And then, right here.
Mr. Missile, I just wanna clarify, all of this is proposal at this point, okay? I just, I know you know that, and we've, but, but I just wanna be sure, everybody knows, these are proposals. There's multiple options that we can look at, so thank you for that.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I've been dreaming about this every night, what kind of make this look, oh hell, getting it correct and making everybody feel good. Right down here, in the girls' bathroom, there's, you have stall doors for a regular bathroom, and then you have stall doors for a handicap bathroom. Cause I gotta have a wider door down there according to ADA, which is down here. And those doors could be as big as a fifty-five inch door spread on it. So, so we have to take some different measurements for that. The other thing too is, what did?
It's the next slide.
Next slide, thank you. Can you look to my urinals? Okay, right here, right there's a, a urinal for the, the boys' urinal, and there's partition. We don't have a partition between the urinals. Some of our, if you go to the football game, we have them down there in the, the bathrooms down by the field. When you guys, the boys and men, when you, when they go in there, they have a protection there. So somebody's not, you have some privacy for that. And so, the schools, most of our schools have them, and so there'll be, I don't even have a very good picture here, but right here, it will be right between there, between the two urinals, okay? And, and here's, here's one right there. It'd be right between here, and then we would put one right here too. For each person, male or who using those, they would have some privacy, okay? And that's a big deal. But, but you know what, I went to see Willow Canyon this week, and I looked at their bathrooms. I looked at this specifically, they don't have anything, nothing. And then I looked at their restroom stalls. Their doors were shorter, so you could see over the doors. And they have more graffiti and more kinds of stuff like that in their bathrooms than our bathrooms. So, so that's where we are with that. Here's an example, this is an example of, of the urinal partition right here. We have, one of the recommendations is gonna be, we were looking at, and I've been in, and I've checked all of ours, that we have some type of a post right to it. So we come from the wall to a post. And the reason is, kids will be kids sometimes. Sometimes they may bump, or maybe they just faint or fall over, and they might push that partition over. So this would hold it better, and so, we don't have to worry about it falling over. Because kids will be kids, and in one of the bathrooms that I went, not public bathrooms, store bathroom, they had a post on theirs, so.
Mr. Missile, will you come back to the mic?
Oh, I gotta come back to the mic, sorry. I used to be a teacher, so I always walked around my classroom. Okay, sorry about that. Now, the other thing I wanted to tell you about, we're gonna put, sorry, put shower doors. I like to look at my product. We're gonna put shower doors on these private showers, if we can, if we get approved. So we can put a door on those showers. So if somebody wants to have a private shower, they're gonna be able to do that. And we, they can be used, the same doors that we use for the bathroom stalls can be used for those too, okay? And I have, how many we need and everything on, on all these products. So, I'm doing a lot of research, and I'm continuing to do research. It's exciting to see what we can do and see what we can make work, okay?
Mr. John, oh, I was gonna say, would you, Mr. Johnson, would you step up and talk about the locker rooms just a little bit?
Right, okay. So, what you're looking at is a typical locker room shower. Both of these pictures are gonna be in the same shower. There's an open area as well as two stall-type showers. And these are both in the same shower for all the locker rooms. The open area that's on your right is very rarely if ever used. I think a wrestling team uses it and that's it, because wrestlers have to shower because of all the mats, the stuff, the bacteria. So, that is, that's the only one that's, the, the only team that uses kind of those open showers. So, right now with locker rooms, we're not there yet with this, but they're very lightly used. Mostly the kids just go home and shower. When we get to that, when or if we get to that point where we need to address locker rooms like we do bathrooms, it will be the same type of thing where, you know, it'll be a meet with administration. Let's make some modifications, get that person in there so that there's no kind of big group of people in there addressing at the same time. And, and we'll do that as, as administrators at the high school. But, but yeah, that's kind of what we're looking at. Both are in the same locker room, and Jim's gonna put doors on these, those privacy doors to make it so that people can shower without having to be out in the open like they are now, so.
Excuse me just a second, is that one a handicap shower?
Say that again.
Is, is that one there a handicap shower?
There's one that's got a bunch of bars in there, that is a handicap shower, yep.
Okay, bigger door.
Okay. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about safety, cause I know you guys are thinking, boy Jeremy, I'm glad you're here, but what does IT have to do with bathrooms? So, we're gonna, we're gonna look a little bit at cameras. We have existing cameras, and as Mr. Gorman said, the, the existing cameras do cover our bathrooms in the G and H hallways. But what we're, what we're talking about is adding to that to specifically cover the bathrooms, so we can see who goes in and out, have a better idea of kind of what the occupancy is. So, what we're looking at is in the G building, the, the bathrooms are in the same place in the hallway, just right across from each other. So, the proposal is that we add just one kind of fisheye lens camera that would be able to see the, the hallway, both, both sets of bathroom doors and be able to watch those. In the H building, they're actually in two different places in the hallway, so we'd have to add two different cameras to catch those doors. But once again, we, we want to, we wanna be able to, to see who goes in and out, be able to track occupancy and, and what's going on if there is some sort of event that we need to look into. The outside commons area, this is actually a place where we don't have coverage of the bathroom doors. And so this would be one that would add to, it, it would add coverage for bathrooms that we don't currently have. And once again, they're right next to each other, so we could put in one kind of fisheye lens camera and catch the whole thing. And that would actually have the added benefit of giving, giving us a little better coverage of the commons area itself.
Is that the one that's by the cafeteria?
Yes, I'm sorry, I should've, I should've defined that. So the commons area would be the outside bathrooms that are outside the cafeteria on that building. And then, the, the front lobby of the gym, currently, once again, we don't have any coverage of the, the front lobby in the gym. So this would be adding coverage for those bathrooms. And, once again, the, the benefit of adding camera coverage to the lobby of the gym, just in general. So all of those things are what we're proposing in the different, the different phases of this.
Hey Jeremy, before you get off of that slide, is it our goal to, by increasing cameras, if the proposal goes through, to identify the person or the people going in, or just seeing the number of people?
It, it could be used to identify, to, you know, have some personally identifying information from that of who goes in. Right now, the cameras are, they're close enough that we can get a general picture of what's going on. And the cameras are actually high-quality cameras, so we can see in general what's going on. But this would give a much clearer picture, literally clearer picture of what's going on closer. And yes, it would be able to identify better who's going in and out.
Good, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Is the intent that somebody's gonna be watching these, the camera display all the time? Or is it for going back and looking at, yeah, you get a report or something, you go back and, you know, look at the cameras to see?
Well, I don't, I don't wanna answer for high school staff, cause that would actually be a high school staffing question. Right now, we don't have someone just sitting all day watching cameras. But if Mark wants to talk about that. I would say, you know, right now, short-term, we are monitoring cameras and we are posting an individual there. But we have, there's much more to monitor than just the bathroom, and so we wanna get to a point where bathrooms are, are secure as far as when you go in there, there's a sense of privacy to them, as well as then, there's, if there's ever an issue that were, were to come up, that were to be brought to our attention or rise, that we can then go to that, look at that time, find out when, and if there was something that could have possibly aligned with whatever the concern was that was brought to our attention. But eventually, there's gonna come a point where we need our security back monitoring our whole campus, not just the G Hall and the bathroom right there. So, the, the, you know, it would serve more of a purpose of long-term to record what's going on, and it, and that recording lasts for days, I'm not sure the exact length of time, and allow us to go back, and if there was a complaint, a concern, something, we have record to go back and look for. I, I will also say, just on a related note, when we put the camera system in, one of the things we talked about was the fact that the camera system itself, just knowing that there is a camera system there itself is a deterrent, and, and helps to keep these, these incidents from happening, because if you know you're gonna get caught, it makes it less appealing to try to do something. So, a question about how long the footage lasts. In most cases, it's thirty days, it depends on the, the server storage. In, in some cases, it's, it can be twenty days. But we can also add into that storage and make it last longer. So we have some flexibility there, but our, our goal with it is to get right around thirty days that the, the footage lasts. Okay, so, in talking about the cameras, there are actually three different types of cameras that work with our current system. The fisheye camera, that is, in my personal opinion, that's the coolest camera we have, because it's, it's one camera and it gets a three sixty view of everything. We have one in the cafeteria, right in the middle of the room, and when you expand it out, you can see right into the serving line of the cafeteria, from the, the ceiling in the middle of the, in the middle of the cafeteria. So if you've been in the room, you would be more impressed than you appear right now. We also have kind of the, the fixed dome camera, and that's your, your general camera. It's just pointed in one direction, it doesn't get a very wide picture, but it gets a good picture of what it's pointed at. And then we have the one hundred and eighty-degree panoramic camera. That's actually three cameras put together that gives you three HD pictures stitched together of one hundred and eighty degrees. And the reason I put all of these on here is, when, when the time comes, if we're going to install cameras in different locations, I have ideas on what might work, but working with the high school administration and staff, we would put in whatever works best for that area. If that's, if that's the fisheye camera, that's great. If that's one of the fixed dome or the panoramic cameras, that's also great. So, the idea is, we're, we're going to put something in that works for that particular area.
Now, did I understand, when Mr. Gorman spoke earlier, that there's already a camera, fisheye camera in the hallways?
There are, yes, there are, I believe, three fisheye cameras in the G building and two in the H building. Trying to remember. But they're spread down the hallway, and so they're not specifically covering any one area. They're kind of trying to cover the whole length of the hallway.
And so the, the, the proposal then is that these would just be right outside, right outside the restroom?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. The next thing that we are proposing is some sensors. There are, there are new sensors that have been coming out. Over the past, I would say, ten years, definitely, and then the, over the last five years, they have gotten a lot better. They can, they are just sensors, they are not actually recording anything. They are not, they are not cameras, they're, they are nothing but sensors. And what they do is they go into the bathrooms, and they can detect noise, like they can detect decibel level. So if there's a fight or bullying going on, there's yelling, it would detect that. It would trigger an alert to staff, whoever, whoever is set up to do that. It can detect vandalism, obviously, if they're being quiet about the vandalism. It seems pretty hard to quietly tear a soap dispenser off the wall, but it can detect the vandalism, but it can also detect vape. The, the sensor that we're proposing actually detects THC and differentiates between that vaping and smoking, which is, there's not a lot of sensors out there that do that, but this one would integrate with our current system. And then it would also detect carbon monoxide, among other things. There are, there are a lot of things that these sensors can detect, detect, but those are really the main things. And, and the things that, for us, are, are really pushing the student safety. That's what we want, is for students to be safe in the bathrooms. These sensors would give us the ability to monitor what's going on, get alerts triggered to mobile devices or email based on certain criteria, and be able to timestamp that with our camera system to know, at this point, when this event went, when this event happened, these are, this, this is the footage. These are the kids that went in and went out. And we would be able to timestamp that and look back at that information. So the sensor, the sensor that we're proposing is the Halo Smart Sensor. It does integrate directly with our current camera system. There are other sensors out there, but this is the one, this is the one that integrates the best. And I really like the idea that it detects the THC and differentiates between that and other things.
I had a question just about the video monitoring to back up, because you said the sensor doesn't actually record anything, but the videos do. How, how much data do we save? Like how long are we keeping recordings currently, and how long can we keep them with the new?
So, so right now, if, if we don't do anything, the recordings are overwritten after about thirty days. In some cases, it's less, in some cases, it's more, but kind of an average of thirty days on the server. If there's an event and we want to save that, we can save it indefinitely. So if there's an event and we go back and we pull the footage and all of the time codes and everything, we can save that as a file, and we can archive that for as long as we want. There is no limit to that.
Are we using local servers? Is that what you're using?
I'm sorry?
Local servers?
Yes, we have, the high school has three local servers that share the load of all the cameras that are currently on, on site. And so the, the local servers would have thirty days of storage, and then we can save storage. We can export that and, and put that where, we can save it local, we can save it to the cloud, and we can store that indefinitely. But we would need to have a notification within those thirty days that something has happened, so we can go back and pull it before it's overwritten.
Okay.
Okay? All right, if there's no other questions, I'm gonna turn it over to Aaron.
Good evening. So obviously, this is going to potentially cost us some money. So I just wanna talk about some possible funding sources, maybe. So, depending on, you know, what is decided and how much everything comes in, it will depend on how we, how we source our funding. I, I anticipate that we will likely need to split fund between a few different sources. And so we do have some options. Grants is obviously always an option. We could potentially use some USR funds for that. There are also some school safety grants out there that we could apply for that would support these, support these changes. We have capital funds, so we need to review our plan and see what projects we could potentially hold off on to make this more of a priority over those. We have enterprise funds, which, that is, that comes from our rental. So anytime we rent out a facility or things, we have a fund that we can dip into that. And then, of course, donations. So if there are any donations that come in, we could obviously use those as well. With anything that we're going to do, all of our procurement will have to be in place, of course, with this. So, if we, if we do it in-house, then that's great. We have our maintenance crew that could potentially do some of it. Depending on how much money it is, will depend on whether we have to go out for any kind of formal bids. If we hire any kind of contractor from outside of our, of our employees, then we'll have to make sure that we vet them, they need to be licensed, they have to have a fingerprint clearance card, et cetera, et cetera. Any questions on that? Can't tell you exactly what we'd use, cause I don't know how much it's going to cost yet. But those are some options. So, we've provided a lot of information tonight. We've seen a lot, we've had the history, how we got here, some suggest, some suggestions. And so a lot of careful consideration by this team has, has been given to how and when. And so a lot of careful consideration by this team has, um, has been given to how and when these updates should take place based on several factors. Uh, we want to base it on importance, so which restrooms are frequented the most? You know, we feel maybe we should address those first. Uh, we want to make sure that what we purchase will meet the needs and purpose of what we're trying to do and cosmetically look okay. So we may need to do certain sections at a time or certain bathrooms at a time, rather than, you know, going out and buying, you know, 100 doors, not that we need 100 doors, and go, ooh, these aren't going to work, or we don't like how this, how this, um, looks. And then we also need to look at the feasibility, you know, if we're going to do this in-house, do we have the manpower to do it? Uh, so the funding, you know, how much is this going to cost and, and over what time span are we going to do it? So, um, we do see these, um, three different phases, um, potentially. Maybe we would want to just jump to phase C, just kind of depends on, on what we're thinking here. So phase A, um, we would make the privacy improvements in student restrooms, buildings G and H, because those are the most frequented restrooms, um, the most high, highly trafficked. So we make those safety improvements that were proposed earlier by Mr. Missile as far as the doors, um, and those privacy hinges and things on those, um, and the cameras and sensors. Phase B would be the same as phase A, so G and H, um, as well as the gym lobby and in the commons area. And then phase C would be both A and B with the addition of the student restrooms and showers in the locker rooms. So again, we've given you a lot of information this evening to think about, um, and our suggestions on some proposals. And of course, we welcome any recommendations and suggestions from the board on the next steps in this process.
And we like donations.
Thank you, Erin. So does anybody from the board need to go backwards and ask any questions from the presenters?
I have a couple of just general student safety questions that I think are things that we, we heard from parents before, that I just had specific questions about. So probably for Mark and your team, um, what should a student do if they currently have an issue in a bathroom where they feel violated or they feel like someone is in the bathroom that should not be there?
Yes, thank you. So if, if anything happens that is a concern across our campus, they initially need to bring it to the administrative attention. We have them fill out an incident report, give us as much detail, time, things of that sort. So we can then start the investigative process to find out what, uh, might have happened, uh, if there was something that could have occurred. And we've had a couple of incidents that have been brought to us that way, um, since this happened. And we've been able to go back and, and investigate. I'm going to go into a little bit of details, just as an example, so you can kind of see. We had a student who, um, had reported that, uh, there was a person in the bathroom in a stall that had been recording them, um, or recording an incident, and you could hear the video. And it happened to, um, uh, be where you could see the individual in the bathroom, you could see them turning the camera around, and you could identify features that were in that stall. Uh, the female felt like the student who was male was in the female's bathroom. Uh, however, as we investigated, um, I think it was both, um, Matt and Clint, uh, were looking at the video and found that they were identifying fa- um, things that were on the wall. Let's just say it was the peak eagles, or the beautiful peak eagles. Um, and there was, there were things on the wall that were identified. They went up there and looked at those from the video that was submitted and, and turned into them and found that it was in the men's restroom, that it was being recorded, but the audio was then being, you, you could hear it because of the closeness of the restrooms. So it really wasn't a student in the female bathroom. So the cameras, the instant reports allow us to start investigating, and so definitely coming and reporting it is, is number one.
So if-
And it doesn't have to be administering, they can go to a teacher, uh, any adult in our-
So this was a boy recording something in the men's room and the girl thought he was in the bathroom with her?
Correct.
He, he said he was in the recording, he said he was in the girl's bathroom.
So, and they can probably speak a little bit more to this, however, um, I think I got, I got enough of it to, to, I guess, share that. But they were able to then, again, talk to the, the student who had filed the complaint, look at her video, look at the wall and show her that it indeed wasn't the women's restroom. But the conversation that was happening was carrying into the men's bathroom. And they felt like, because of the comments and such, that it was happening in the women's bathroom, so.
Mark, can I, can I ask?
Plus, the kid also gave the impression that he was in the girl's bathroom. And that was kind of his, like, hey, look at me, and we, we figured out he was not.
Did she see this on social media also?
I believe that was the case, right? That came, that was like on Snapchat or something else, so, yeah.
Okay, so follow-up. What, what is, is there a punishment for a student that's not transgender using a bathroom that is not of their appropriate gender?
Uh, yes, there is.
And what, what would that be?
Uh, I believe that it's, uh, suspension, um, out of school.
Okay.
I think it was three days minimum.
But-
You guys can correct me if I'm wrong on that.
But right now, students can, you know, a male who goes to restroom in the men's room, he can take a video and not get in trouble?
In the, in the men's restroom?
Yeah, if he's in the video, it, you know, I mean, in this situation, granted it was social media, but he was in the men's room videoing, listening to girls' room conversation, and that, I'm just asking.
I think that's not what I'm concerned.
Yeah, it wasn't that he was listening, he was trying to make it seem like he was in the girl's bathroom.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
And that was, I think, just in the wake of, of this happening, the day of the, the walkout that was happening, um, on campus.
And he did receive a consequence for that, yeah.
That was, that was my question, was if he got in trouble, that's not okay. You can't take videos in the bathroom and put it on Snapchat wherever, whatever it is.
And it took about two hours of administrative time to figure out that it was in fact the men's bathroom, so, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, okay, those are my questions.
Ron, you have anything else? Sandy?
I'm thinking, um, I'm just, one of the questions, and, you know, God forbid, because kids are the way they are and things that they see, the cameras, do they ever get vandalized?
Joe, give them any ideas?
No.
I know.
Those cameras are too high up, they can't vandalize them. And a lot of times, kids don't even reali- they don't even realize the cameras are there, or they just know they're there and they ignore them, but they're too high up to vandalize for.
Okay, 'cause, 'cause that's my first thought. I think cameras are wonderful. I do think, you know, um, knowing somebody's watching what you're doing, maybe you're on your better behavior than you would if you thought no one was watching you. So no, I, I love the idea of the cameras, I just want to make sure they wouldn't be vandalized.
But can I also add, there's enough on the ceilings, cameras, that it would be hard if they don't know what's what? It would be hard for them to know what's a camera, what's a, a smoke detector, what's a, what's an alarm. So it's not like we're hiding them, uh, they are, if, if you know what you're looking for, they are clearly marked. But there's enough out there that if you don't know what you're looking for, you don't know what you're looking at.
And to answer your question earlier, the, the cameras now are probably 20 feet or so from the bathroom, and we can identify kids that are moving in and out of those bathrooms. Not great, but we can identify them. If we put them where Jeremy wants them, we would be able to very clearly identify kids that we needed to have a discussion with.
Anything else? Well, while Sandy's thinking, um, we're going to start with the, uh, people in attendance who wish to speak or ask questions. So I've got, uh, Kristin Threwit. Were your questions answered, or do you have more things?
For the most part, yes. I just had a couple of questions.
Okay, if you can come up to the podium, please.
Okay. Well, first of all, um, I spoke last time, I'm Kristin Threwit, a mother of a student at the campus. And the board, um, superintendent, as well as administration, thank you for this opportunity. And I want to applaud you and just say thank you, because I really think that you all have made an effort. And it's apparent, and so I thank you for that, because I think what happened initially was we received that email and it went out social media, you know, and that first night, we were all freaked out. We were, you know, our children were in danger, um, some of us did not agree with it morally. You know, there were just so many issues going on. And how it happened that it went out to students, I know it was a mistake, but it just felt like it was undercut, that the parents, you know, we were out of the loop, and it made us really angry, and that was the result, you know, of how it came out. That being said, um, it does look like you guys have put a lot of research into this. My question is, what is the timeframe? I know it's going to cost money, I know that we have to go through all the proposals, but right now, um, Kendra and I had the opportunity to go meet with Principal Gorman, and I appreciate that very much, because what we were lacking was communication. And what we got from him was a little bit better understanding of what was going on and what had taken place. But, um, what we noticed was the restroom were in dire need of updating, just in general. I realized that maybe our school, you know, doesn't have the funds. So what is the timeframe to be able to get the funds to get to the point where we have safe restrooms? And then also, while we were there on campus, um, we went to the restrooms. They did have the gentleman that was there that was supervising, but while we were there, probably in the 10 minutes or so in the hallway, I noticed that he was absent for several minutes. So if you're talking about having somebody posted, it wasn't consistent. So that's what I noticed as a parent. I'm not, you know, blaming you all, maybe he asked it, go to the restroom himself. But is there a backup plan, you know? And then, what is happening? You said that student did not return, so therefore the threat, it seemed like it was kind of diminished? Has the student come back since then?
So we would not, we cannot reveal any information about a student's discipline. You know, if it were your student, you wouldn't want everybody to know. So the student is not back on campus.
Okay, well, that's what I wanted to know. So it kind of seems like once the threat was off-campus, it was kind of pushed under the rug. Is the student coming back? Are we still?
So I'll, I'll address that just a little bit, because I think that there's, um, when there's an active investigation by the police, we are not allowed to tell anybody anything.
Okay.
If we ever feel through the police department, um, our own administrators, that there's a true threat, we will announce the threat, close school, do whatever we need to do. Once it's in the hands of the police department and they have given us guidance about how to respond, we cannot interfere with their investigation by announcing to everybody that this has come on. After the, after the case, after it's closed, then we can tell people it's happened. If it's an active threat, kids are in danger, you will absolutely be notified. In this case, there was never a moment in time this child was anywhere near our campus.
Okay, but there was-
He hadn't been at school for a while before that.
Okay, well, it was posted on Facebook, it was posted on Wickenburg PD, on their social media about the investigation, so it was pub, public knowledge.
They posted the same thing we did, they posted it before we did, and we had that conversation, because usually we post things at the same time that a threat has been received.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think as parents, we just feel like you are, not you in general, the school district, the administration, are doing things after the fact. Wickenburg announces that they've been doing this, conducting this investigation, and then you guys come back and it's like, oh, yes, yes, this is going on. Or there's an issue with the restroom, it went out to the students. And then you backtrack and say, oh, parents, by the way, we meant to address this to you. So it feels like there's a lot of covering up and backtracking on the situation. And the original email that came out to the students, it's from Mark Gorman. It says transgender students may use the restroom assigned to their gender of identity. But the one that came out from you, just two weeks later, said that the restrooms are for either boys or girls. And any student desiring additional or additional privacy is encouraged to meet with administrators or a counselor. So which is it?
Well, that had already happened, as Mr. Gorman had explained, the policy for this transgender, transgender student. And first of all, I will begin by saying, I apologize for the communication. I work every single day to get communication right, and every single day, somebody says, why didn't you say something this way? And I think that's how we are as humans, and I apologize for that. Um, when Mr. Gorman and I were talking about, we already had kids that were coming and saying, can we use any bathroom we want? So the immediate issue was to make sure kids knew that was never the case, that was not the case. And social media can be our worst enemy right now. And so lessons learned, absolutely. The letter that went to the parents the next day was already in draft form. We were still working on the legal context and trying to get to the parents. Um, and, and in hindsight, maybe we should have not even said anything to the kids, but we were already worried that students had already brought that to our attention, so it was out there. So it's, it was an immediate issue, so I apologize for that. If, and it, and it's hard to predict what's going to make social media. It's hard to predict what's going to be an issue, because if we think something's, we're going to, we're going to handle it, we're going to get the communication out, we're going to get it out in the forefront, and then something, you know, a TikTok challenge comes in to, to devious licks comes out at the same time, everybody thinks it's connected. So, um, the truth is, Mr. Gorman had already followed the process of talking to the student, um, recommending that the student use the single-use bathroom, which was the process that is used. That's how we identify it. And in most cases, transgender students want to use the single, they want permission to use the single-use restrooms, because typically, they're in the health office or they're away. So that becomes part of the issue. Um, so that didn't happen this way. So what to say, a transgender student may use the student, the bathroom of their gender identity is a true statement, but there is communication that must have, that must happen before that is, that, that takes place, right?
Okay, all right. And then last question, have you guys addressed the student body? You know, like, we've talked about possibly an assembly or something, just so everybody's on the same page. So that if students aren't checking the blackboard messages, or if parents aren't checking an email, is there a situation where you've gotten the group together and said, look, there are consequences to your behavior, there will be punishment if boys go into the girls and they're not supposed to, this is where we stand? Is there something like that that's in the works?
There hasn't been a, in a, a whole school assembly necessarily. I mean, we met and talked about some of these, and you brought us some great ideas, we are exploring those. We had a meeting just today to, again, follow up with, um,
Mediation.
With them, you know, regarding that, and are in the process of putting together that plan. So that, you know, it's not just kind of something we're throwing out there, but we're thinking through too at the same time, so.
Will we be able to get maybe something in writing that gives a timeline? Because everything seems like it's, it's in the process or it's in proposals. Is there something that's going to have a strategic plan? I know it's hard to pin that down, but is there a way that we can communicate? Because I know that what we found when Kendra and I went was just opening up, the means of communication helped tremendously. And then we were able to share with parents that were upset, you know, this is what we were able to speak with Principal Gorman about. And he was able to clarify these situations where if there's misunderstanding, you know, over social media, we can't do that. So is there a way that we can speak publicly or be a liaison, or is there anything?
Keep the kids off social media.
You can't do that, though. You can't keep kids off social media.
Well, I think if it's something that the board needs to address, if there, if the proposal options are out there, and if the administration comes to the board with the proposals and the funding and how they're going to handle that, then we will make a vote and we will approve it as soon as it gets to us. I have no problem with saying that. I, I would like to see the best possible solution as soon as possible.
Yes, agreed, and I think that's what we understand.
And we all would, we all would, um, obviously.
Yeah.
And what, at the end of this meeting or study session, is we're going to be asking Dr. Remendini to meet with her administrative staff and put, put, um, put proposals together with the funding sort, uh, fundings, so we know. And that's what they're in the process of getting is the money, or, uh, getting the idea what the money's going to look like.
Good.
And are we going to have it? Where are we going to get it from? So when that happens at our next board meeting, when they've got those proposal pieces ready, and they're pretty much, they're written.
Yeah.
We saw them on the board here. Um, we just have to direct the staff to, we'd like to see these proposals, and then as a board, we'll make a decision which one is going to fit.
Okay, wonderful.
If you don't have the money, you don't have the money, but, you know.
And I will, I will clarify that the direction from the governing board will put the steps in motion. I cannot promise that all of the information we need for all of the proposals will be available at our next board meeting, because that's two weeks away, and there are a lot of options. What you saw is possibilities for the doors, for example, on the restrooms. Jim had one picture up there, there's probably 20 different doors that we could look at, and we've got to do cost and pricing. And those privacy things may be something that we do right away, that would be a very minimal cost while we're looking at the products. And in- And in truth, there, there aren't a lot of examples to look at. You know, there's not a lot of other people who've tackled privacy in high school bathrooms. They all look pretty much like ours do. So we will be trailblazers in that, just providing privacy for everyone, for every student. So we will, we will get started on that as soon as we're given the directive on that. But we want to be sure that we are responsible with that, not to say we're buying all these doors right now because that may or may not be feasible.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I, and I also wanted to say, when we went, there was a calmness on campus. And we were very grateful for that because we went expecting chaos. And when we went there, maybe it's the calm before the storm and I hope not, you know. But it was, it was better than we expected. So I'm grateful for that. Thank you.
Well, thank you for reaching out to Mr. Gorman and his team because that's the right way to do it. If you would have picked up your social media device and just went on there and had a meeting with everybody else instead of them, we wouldn't be sitting here just like this tonight. So thank you for doing that. Appreciate it. All right, next we've got Colleen Peterson.
I really didn't anticipate saying something specific because I wasn't sure the direction of the meeting. But I am Colleen Peterson. I am a teacher at the high school. My son graduated from there. I graduated from there. My daughter is a senior there. I am deeply invested at Wickenburg High School. And I like, I want our community to know that this issue with bathroom safety and security have, was happening long before this happened with the transgender, transgender use. We've always had problems with bathrooms because teenagers are problematic by nature. And they just do bad things when there's nobody watching that they think. So I don't, I think the direction that we're moving as far as security and safety for the bathrooms needed to happen. And this brought it to the forefront. But I don't want that to be the issue that holds us back as well from taking care of providing safety for our bathrooms. Like some kids don't go to the bathroom the whole day because they don't feel safe there. And that's never okay. And that was 10 years ago. So I appreciate the work. I know Jim has tirelessly, my classroom is right next to the bathroom. So I am, I got an inside track with the business that's going on there. I would say to parents that we need to do a better job of teaching our kids how to behave and treat others with kindness over what's happened. And also, it's not funny to vandalize school. Like it costs you as a parent money. It costs our business owners money. So we just have to do a better job about educating our kids and having those conversations. And again, kids are going to do bad things because they're teenagers. But let's have a positive impact on how we respond to that behavior. Our teachers are, want what's best for these kids. And 85% of our students are not misbehaving. It's a small population that we've got causing strife. But like she said, there is a calmness on our campus. Homecoming last week was the best we've had in years. Kids were invested. So I want Wickenburg High School to start being looked at as a positive place to be because it really is. If you can come there and see it, it's a great, I wouldn't work there. I could go somewhere else. I could retire. I could be a pickleball player. But I like my job. I like working with kids and it's a good place to be. And I want that message communicated out there.
Thank you, Colleen. See, we like positive. All right, we've got Kendra Baylor.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. That was exactly what I needed to hear before I came up here. Because I had a conversation with students too. And I've got a few things that maybe I want to talk about. But one thing I need maybe clarified first was I hear the word policy coming out a lot. But what is the Wickenburg High School's policy on transgender bathroom use? There is not one as far as I can find.
There's not a cap, there's not a governing board policy. It's a small letter P policy. When we say policy and we say governing board policy, that's policy that's been enacted by the typically informed by Arizona revised statutes and attorneys giving us advice on what we adopt as policy. There are a lot of lowercase policy procedures that we enact due to court cases, legal advice. I don't, I can't even give an example of what we do that is not written in policy, but we do have procedures. Even some of our discipline is not a policy. We do have a discipline matrix, but it's arranged, so. So you do have. I know that, but it's not, Arizona revised statutes, most of our governing board policies refer right back to state law. But there are plenty of things that we do that refer to court cases, procedures, those kinds of things that then we say policy and it's a lowercase policy, lower P. Does that make sense?
That makes sense. Clear as mud.
I know, right?
So that was kind of, you know, when Kristen and I went in to talk to you, Mr. Gorman, you know, that's kind of where I was. I was like, just tell me what, what they're, what it's supposed to be. You know, what did these kids have to go by going into this? They didn't have anything. And you're right, Colleen. I talk, I've talked to a couple of students and those bathrooms are, they are not going to bathroom. As far, they said, you're putting, it's too much of a risk of what you'll get involved in just walking in there to go to the bathroom of what's, what's going on in the stall. Teacher walks in, you busted everybody at the office. So they're not going, you know? And I don't, I don't, it wasn't that way when I was in high school. So I don't know, but I've been to a lot of high schools. And it didn't seem to be something, but things have changed. And I understand that the social media has created such a firestorm with all of this. But, and I see, Mr. Hodges, that you're really irritated with the social media issue. But you guys, this is how they communicate. Mr. Gorman, you need to get TikTok and you need to figure it out. Maybe your IT man can help you. That's, this is how they communicate with each other and this is how you get information, they get information. We're not going to keep them off of it. I'd love to. I really would. I wish we could go back 10 years. I just learned today that I'm older than Google. I didn't know that. I learned that on social media. So we're not stopping them. We need, but we need to be, you know, when we're asking, what was the threat? We're still not getting a clear answer. Well, we think they said, and was it this and did that happen? No, but we don't have, what was the threat on social media? Did, did you see it? Did you hear it? You know, we can't hear, it was something like that. We're not quite sure, but it's taken care of. You know, we're all dealing with high schools that are surviving school shootings. That's what the concern is. When Kristen asks, she doesn't want to know how this kid was disciplined. She wants to know if there's a threat to her child being in school every day. She don't want to know the personal information about the individual. She wants to know if her student is protected. So it just seems like, you know, I understand that there is not a Wickenburg High School policy for this because I'm not sure that there is a Arizona revised procedure that goes with this either. I did take the time to this letter that was sent out after the students to the parents, to Wickenburg High School. And I don't have a student at the time, so I didn't get it. But Kristen had forwarded it to me. And I just kind of took the time after we had a small parent meeting and was feeling a little bit defeated. And, and it's this letter that originally went out to the students and then addressing the parents. And it was saying, to clarify, students are required to use gender identified bathrooms with an option of using a single-use facility, blah, blah, blah. Number one, allowing transgender students to use restroom of their identity is not a district or school policy. It's a requirement of Title IX of the Education Amendments Act of 1972. This act protects students from discrimination based on sex. As of February 2020, the Ninth Circuit Court serving Arizona upheld this dismissal of a suit filed against school district for accommodating the rights of transgender students. I was done. I was defeated right there the first time I read it and I never went back to it. But that night I did go back to it. And I started clicking on the reference on, on the last page. It would tell me that. And the first reference took me to Title IX. And in Title IX, I can't find one thing that talks about high school restrooms.
It doesn't.
It talks about sexual discrimination. It doesn't talk anywhere about what you're to do. It does talk about an educational, educational institution and how it was defined. And the last time it was updated was October 22nd, 1986. I did find that, but I would be glad, I would, I'm just trying to go by the references that you gave us as parents to.
So the court case is probably the best reference because the findings of.
The what is?
The court case.
Oh, yes.
In that court, court case, the ruling judges wrote a very thorough opinion about the interpretation of Title IX covering transgender students. And so that happened several years ago, that it was declared that Title IX at the federal level, Title IX covers sex discrimination based for transgender students. So that's what's, that's what was the impetus for the change in how schools could deal with transgender students. The ruling regarding transgender students mu- must be allowed to use the gender to which they identify was played out in the court system. The court case that I shared with you was a, from the Ninth Circuit Court in San Francisco, based on a ruling of one court case that was brought to their attention in their area. And they ruled in, it was a parent lawsuit brought against a school district that allowed transgender students to have equal access. And the Ninth Circuit Court found that the parents who were saying their children were discriminated against because the transgender student was allowed to use the restroom, that the parents' case was not upheld. And so that was, that's the, that's the seminal case in the Ninth Circuit Court, which we are in, that defines and makes the, the, the basis for the legal opinion that transgender students must be allowed to use the bathroom of the gender to which they identify. Other circuit courts around this nation have ruled the same way. Florida, I want to say that they're in the 14th, but I could get that wrong. There's a big case there that was a big one. As early as this summer, the Supreme Court is still refusing to hear this. So if, if there's a, if there's a complaint about the Ninth Circuit Court, the next step is the Supreme Court. And the Supreme Court of the United States rejected to hear this issue. That would be where the relief comes from, is either a different interpretation at the federal level of Title IX covering transgender students, which would change everything that goes down the road from there. It trickles down. Or the Supreme Court saying, no, we overturn the Ninth Circuit Court's ruling. But the Ninth Circuit Court's ruling that upheld this was based on parents saying their own children were discriminated against because of the transgender students' rights.
Correct.
It's, it's a, it's a pretty interesting case.
It is interesting. What's most interesting to me is that it was first, from what I can tell, it was dismissed in the district court, which is why it went to the circuit court. Am I correct?
I'll, I'll, I don't want to be quizzed on that. I'll forget about that. But it made it to the circuit court.
It was dismissed in the district court. So the parents took it to the district, to the circuit court.
The circuit court agreed to hear it after the district court.
But they upheld the dismissal from the district court, which was in the state of Oregon.
Right, but it's all the Ninth Circuit Court. We're all bound by.
The original dismissal happened in the state of Oregon.
Right, it doesn't, once you're.
Not in the state of Arizona.
But it went to the Ninth Circuit Court and Arizona is in the Ninth Circuit Court.
Right. But it first had to be dismissed in Oregon in order to go to the circuit court.
To my knowledge, nobody in Arizona.
It's federal. This whole thing is federal.
Then why was there a suit filed in the district court in Arizona? That wasn't federal. That was in the district court. I mean, I just, I'm trying to clarify. I have it right here from the Arizona State Law Journal on the number two reference that was sent out to the parents.
Right. And the Arizona State Law Journal, I believe that court case they're talking about is the one that originated in Oregon.
In 2017.
Because we're in the Ninth Circuit Court. So once a circuit court takes up an issue, everybody in that circuit court is bound by that decision. Whether it started in Arizona or it started in California or Oregon or Washington or Nevada, we're bound by that.
Right.
So the, the attorneys for the school districts and the trust that we get our legal advice from are in Arizona. And they are advising every one of their school district clients to allow transgender students to use the restroom of their choice based on that court ruling, the Ninth Circuit Court's ruling and the fact that this has already been tried in our circuit court. So we would likely lose because it's already been there.
And I think that Kristen found also that there was a discrepancy in the paperwork filed in the district court originally.
I can't do it. I can't do anything.
That's okay. I mean, I just wanted, I'm just wanting to clarify. Like to me, I was, when I read it as a parent, I was led to be, this has already happened in Arizona. We're, there's nothing we can do about it.
Yeah, and if you want to go back to Title IX and you look at all the different interpretations, what I sent you probably was just the brief overview of Title IX. But if you go back and every single presidential administration has the opportunity to interpret any of the titles, the laws that become based on titles, the way they want. And almost all of them have.
Right.
So multiple, multiple presidential administrations have made interpretations to Title I, Title II, Title IX, Title 13. And then we're bound by those because they're federal regulations.
Got it.
I'm not a lawyer, but boy, did I really try to understand this.
But I've tried to, I've tried to be thorough because that's the information we were given.
And the, the bottom line is you, when you're in a high-risk entity as a public school district is, we are high-risk. We have a legal, we have a specific legal team that we count on and we have one attorney as part of that legal team. And we count on them for guidance. And we probably contacted him between Mark and I three or four times before we finally went down the path and the what ifs and who else is doing this kind of thing.
So when you, when, when we're told that there was, the, the student was identified and Mr. Gorman and a few others spoke. And then when Mr. Gorman's meeting, he said that the, the student complied with the conversation that they had. But then there was a civil rights complaint made. In what form are we, is that public information? I mean, because I keep, and he said it again tonight, there was a complaint made. In what form? Were they just mad or did they go to the Attorney General's office? I can't.
I don't know the exacts to how they filed their complaint.
They filed a complaint.
What they do is they, and, and this has happened. We've had, in this particular case, somebody who contacted them. And they took the complaint and then sent us a message, an email, you know, regarding the complaint with cases, with information regarding how we needed to align practice, basically.
And so there wasn't like a official filed complaint?
No, and I will clarify, the letter came that Mr. Gorman received, unless he received another one, was from the Anti-Defamation League, which is where the complaint was made. And then the Anti-Defamation League often acts, is one of the entities that acts on behalf of a complainant to file the OC, the Office of Civil Rights Complaints. So it did not get to the point, we did not want to go down the path of an OCR complaint. That's again, our high-risk ish, issue that those complaints are very hard to untangle and cost years and years and lots. And unless an attorney said, no, you should fight this, then, or no, you've done nothing wrong.
I just had, I was always like, but I didn't, I was like, so were they just mad and said, and so we responded? And then we have this whole thing blown up in our face? Or was there something legally that was filed that you needed to respond to?
No, not, no, we wanted, we, we tried to avoid that at all costs. That, that would take away from all the money we can spend on cameras and bathrooms.
So I guess another, the, maybe close to my last question would be, what, what, will there be along with these proposals? Is, is the governing board or who putting together a policy for the high school? Is that, so that there's something, I mean, this is just the beginning. It's gonna, things are going to keep coming up. What's, what?
It would likely not be a governing board policy, but it would be a procedure for addressing a student's wish to use a bathroom for privacy reasons.
And that'll be placed like in the high school.
In the handbook, something like that.
All right.
Yep.
All right. I think that that's about it. I think so. I think so. But I appreciate it, I appreciate your time. Just a lot of things to try and muffle through to get there. Um, was there something, oh, the signs on the bathroom doors and, I mean, I guess I just feel like we're doing a lot for the, to fix this. The, the urinals, I mean, as of now, if there is a transgender male using the boys' bathroom, there's no protection there for any boy at a urinal right now.
There's stalls, there's doors.
Yeah. So are you telling all the boys to use the stalls in case?
They've been.
Okay.
Okay, they've been using number 50.
Okay, I've gone through all the sheets that were turned into me. Was there anybody else that thought of a question?
I did.
Yes. Yeah, we have to use a microphone because we're being livestreamed.
Hi, my name is Toni Deloria. Um, I have, first thing I wanna say is, when I was here at the last meeting, I said that there were no doors on the stalls. Since that time, it has been clarified that there were stalls on the doors, just not on the bathrooms. So I wanted to apologize for that because that was spoken wrong. Okay? And we, we come to find that out, so I just wanted to let you know that. And then, um, she said something about mass shootings and I wanted to say, I don't know if any of, in the, I don't know if any of you staff people saw, like, the day after or the day after that, there was a parachute flyer flying over top of the high school. And I'm not kidding you, I almost turned around and took my kids home because it scared me. And I was like, okay, he's just up there or she's just up there trying to show the kids that this is really cool or whatever? And then it started going back and forth like this?
Can I interject in that?
Yes.
I live down the street from the backside of the high school and it's one of my neighbors which flies around there for the last several years.
Okay, well, it scared me to death in lieu of what just happened two days before that. And I, my thought process was, what is to keep someone from doing that and having a gun up there? Like, it scared me. And I was told by our pastor that it's illegal to fly over the school like that, so I don't know.
He wasn't over the school.
I just want, it was over the school, it was right over the parking lot, I was right there.
Okay.
It was over the school. He was right over the parking lot going back and forth like this. Okay, and then the next thing I wanna know is, the transgender's children can use either stall that they identify with, but how do you know if they really are transgendered? Or if they're just trying to mess around and get into the boys' bathroom or get into the girls' bathroom?
That is, that is a good question.
Have they had any-
We haven't had any others. We do have one student who has identified at this point, that's the one.
But have they had any medical treatment to turn to that sex? Because that's what transgendered means.
So, that is something I don't know that we can get into as far as a school. Uh, we do have, again, the process that we're taking that is if, if a student is identifying as the opposite gender, um, male identifying female, female identifying male, that the process would be that, that they have to meet with administration. Um, we again, offer them the use of single-use stalls. And, um, you know, if, again, meeting with them, the parents doesn't, um, resolve that, then, uh, we would need to go probably down a similar direction. But we, I, we, I don't know that we have the grounds to necessarily ask for that from a parent.
Right, I get it.
To find that out, to get that information.
But, like, somebody else said about Colleen, Colleen, I said, when, I thought, I think she said about the kids being naughty? Like, they're not, they're teenagers. I have a bunch of them. I know them. And they're, so that's what I was wondering. I was sitting there going, well, how would you guys know? All of a sudden, one of my grandkids decided he's transgendered and now he's gonna go in the girls' bathroom. I mean, he wouldn't do that, but I could see kids that would. But anyway, I just wanted to say that. And I do wanna say this too. I think you guys are actively trying to take care of the situation and I'm really grateful. Because at first, we didn't feel like that. But I do think, I can see that you are. And I can see that you're concerned about it and I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Did you? Okay, good. Anybody else? All right, well, I appreciate everybody coming out tonight and, uh, what I like to do is, at this time, I always go for the, um, Mercedes over the Ford Maverick. So I'd like to see if we can get administration to, um, get us some figures for the Phase C, Option C. Because all of those things, there's, there's nothing less important, you know what I'm saying? So, A rolls into B, B rolls into C. Because adding that component of the showers and locker rooms, that's gonna be, I mean, that's like right around the corner. So I'd like to just get that stuff together. It doesn't mean that we can do all of those. It's a matter of like to get the figures, uh, the best guesses that we can get, Jim, and, uh, that type of thing, and see where we can go from there. So then we can hear this and, uh, get the recommendation from you and your team. So then we can make a better decision.
Okay. I would, I would state that we're happy to do that and we'll start working on that. What I'd like to just clarify with the board is your approval for us, if we should get Phase A ready to propose that we do that. At Phase B and C will cause a little bit more work on our part and just for capacity, do you want us to wait to present all the phases at once or would you like them, um, presented to you as we get them ready? Does that make sense?
As you get them ready.
Okay.
That's, that would be my preference, as you get them ready.
Okay.
If we can just keep moving us, you know, in a direction.
Perfect.
You're already in the right direction as far as we can go for what we've got to work with. I'd like to, uh, yeah.
Okay.
As I get them prepared.
Okay. Team, did you hear that?
Yeah, you still have a couple hours tonight. All right, well, I appreciate it. And, um, Mr. Gorman, Mr. Bushbaum, Mr. Johnson, thank you so much for presenting. Mr. Missile, thanks for all your input. Mr. Corliss. And of course, the money gal, Mrs. Johnson. Appreciate everything and I appreciate you folks coming out. Um, hope we address more, we're trying to be as transparent as we're possibly able to do. That's the goal of this whole thing. So, um, yeah, let's all get on the same team and just spring your wallets next time.